It's seven o'clock. We have a forum. We call a planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is Craig Switzer.
Thank you. I'm Craig Switzer from Switzer Construction and we're hoping to build a dental office at 200 Russell Street, the former Stan's Fruit Farm. And our customers are Dr. Saxtona and Dr. Bawa. We're looking for your input tonight to help guide us through the process. It's, we're looking for a 4,500 square foot, single-story building for just the room use. No tenant spaces at all. And we've contracted with Don Frederick of Sherman and Frederick to do the engineering and he can do the rest of the presentation as far as parking.
What's the site again?
That's 200.
The old Stan's, Stan of Man.
Stan's.
Oh, okay. Stan of Man. All right. Gotcha.
I just, we just have a concept plan that we've worked out. Basically a one-way operation. There's an entrance off of Route 9. 4,500 square foot building that they show. We currently show 27 parking spaces. Obviously subject to a full survey of the site, grades and so forth. We do, in a one-way operation around with some angle parking, just to be able to keep the pavement to a minimum and...
Just the aquifer protection?
Yes. And stormwater, just in a general manner. Now, obviously we do need to be testing and so forth out there. But that would be the general concept of what we're planning. And again, as Craig said, just looking for some input. I did have one question on your bylaw. You have the parking requirements twice the building size. I was curious if that included the accessway between the parking lot?
Yes. What it does is, it wouldn't include this roadway around, but it would include...
For the aisles, for the back doors?
This, all of that as one area. Okay.
Right. So what's shown on there is basically 9,300 square feet as opposed to 9,000 square...
Okay. If you don't think you need that much, you don't need to put it in. You just need to design for it and make sure the site can handle it.
Okay.
Okay. So that's up to you. If you, you know, you make that decision, just show it on a property, something like a future or proposed or reserved parking, something like that.
Okay.
Okay. Can they think you remain as green space if you don't think you need it? That's, you know, I don't know. That's up to you. I mean, a dentist's office doesn't have, there's not an awful lot of cars for dentist's office, but again, I don't know how many spaces you're going to need or how many dentists you're going to have in there.
There's probably going to be six or s- there are eight operatories, is that what we... So typically, typically 12 and then staff?
Yeah. So it's up to you what you're putting, you're putting...
The site certainly will handle any amount of parking.
Right.
I think it's almost a two-acre site.
Right. So, you know, like I said, you just put in what you need and you can just use the rest as reserve.
Okay.
This is in the aquifer recharge area too, right?
Yes, correct. Yep.
Yeah. John, you're correct. Aquifer recharge. The only question I have is, most x-rays are digital now and they don't use the developing tanks.
No, no, no.
The digital, no, developing tanks. So that would be the only concern there.
Yeah.
Nobody uses mercury anymore, so.
Depending on your colonial-looking building, stuff like that.
Yeah. No, it's, we're, we would be, it would be subject to site plan review because it's a new use, I would assume.
It's a new building, yeah.
A new building.
Yeah.
And then there's, there are restrictions on the way the building should look from the street. Is that, it's not a historic zone, but what?
It's in the Village Center Overlay District.
Village Center.
And there are design guidelines or design requirements for that.
Okay. And those are clearly in the bylaws?
Yes.
And does that go before a separate review board?
Nope. Well, you should go to the historical commission in conjunction or parallel path when you're going to the planning board.
Okay.
Okay. And you can get their contacts in the town hall.
Right.
For the, for the, stormwater management, we'd like to see some kind of a underground detention as opposed to a pond or something like that, if that's at all possible.
Actually, tonight, Rachel and I, there's another site, couple lots down. It looks like a newer site. It's a kind of quick blue site, so I'm assuming they must have had underground.
Yeah, yeah. Lot of sites are putting it underground on if we confirm.
Isn't this going to comply MS4?
I...
New project?
I don't know anything about MS4. That's kind of like the, the conservation commission, but you do have to comply with the aquifer, no, stormwater management by law. And John said it was an MS4?
Yeah.
I'm sure you've probably heard of that one. But that's basically how clear the water is, I think, when it's infiltrated. And if it's an underground infiltration, you're probably going to have to comply with that one, right? Or any kind of infiltration.
Yeah. You'd have to, you'd have to treat it before it's infiltrating.
Right. You've got no parking in front here at setback? You're going to reuse existing building or are you going to carry it down?
Knock down and remove.
Okay.
That is, so a bald concrete removed. Nothing will be left.
Okay.
It's, it seems like a pretty clean site. We'll obviously have a hygienist survey the site before any demo begins to do a, a immaterial survey and make sure there's nothing.
So, I mean, basically, you know, the basic requirements are in the bylaw between aquifer, stormwater, and site plan. And it's really, you've got a simple project on a simple site, nothing complicated. So, when you apply, oh, a reviewing engineer, who's your design engineer? You're the, you're the design engineer. So we've got a list of reviewing engineers that you would go to, that you pay, to have the, your design reviewed by for the site plan and drainage and everything like that. That's available on the website or from Bill.
You can email me at theplanning@hadleyma.org and I'll send you the list of peer review engineers. And I'll also send you the design guidelines for the Village Center Overlay District.
One of the re-approved reviewing engineers, not that I'm making a pitch for anybody, what happened to be sitting over here in the blue shirt? Have you already met him?
Hey, he's been my boss.
I know. Maybe you don't want him to. But anyways, okay, so you know Mark.
Yeah.
DuSant Associates is another one, and there's a couple of others. So, you know, make your deal with the best one, whoever you choose, and go from there. And we don't really care to be in the middle of this stuff. All we want to do is see a clean letter from whatever engineer you've got that, you know, everything looks good and...
Makes sense.
And stuff like that. So, you know, you typically go back and forth. And we like to see the review letter at least a week or two before the hearing date. Lot of times, nothing against Mark, but every engineering consultant is the same, so he's not unique in this. They wait until the, pretty much the day of or the day before the public hearing and we get it in the email or something like that.
Sure.
So we're making a new, new requirement that it be at least a week ahead of time to give us a chance to actually read the comments, whatever it might be, before the meeting. When you apply for the site plan, two sets of abutters on mailing labels. And it takes about four weeks. So if you applied on the first of the month, or the first Tuesday, or the second Tuesday, the pub, yeah, first or third Tuesday, that's when we meet. The public hearing would typically be the first or third Tuesday of the following month, depending on the public hearing workload.
And you would circulate the plans to whoever does the...
Yeah. Seven sets of plans with two sets of mailing labels and we will circulate and make all, notify all the abutters and everything else by mail.
Oh, you do the abutters mailing?
Yes.
And then you also circulate for the building design review?
Yes.
Whoever does that.
Yes. Well, you would, you would, you should contact the historical commission for...
Okay. So we would contact them first?
Right. They're, they're the, they are our informal review committee. They do not have any authority under the bylaw, but we pretty much take their comments to heart.
So we should submit to them early?
At least the review, at least what the building looks like, yes.
Yeah.
That would be good.
They're not going to care about drainage or parking?
They're going to care about an elevation.
Right. Exactly. Especially if you, and for part of the plan, a 3D colored view of what the building will actually look like.
How about the extent of traffic impact? Do you need a full traffic study here, a full...
Yeah, I, you're, basically what we'd like to see, I mean, you're not going to be a heavy use. You've got a dentist's office. You're going to have, you know...
It won't trigger me.
You're not going to trigger any kind of review with me or anybody else. We'd like to see during your business hours, a simple chart. You're going to be open, let's just say eight to five, whatever the hours may be. At eight to nine, we expect this many cars, nine to 10, this many.
Traffic generation.
Very, very, very general traffic generation report because, I mean, you've got six, you know, just say you've got six chairs and you have, you know, 10 cars entering, leaving an hour. I mean, your, your impact on the area is next to nothing.
It might be a small percentage of what's running today.
Well, I'm just giving you a number. Obviously, I mean, I mean, you know, a dentist doesn't, a dentist's office, unless you've got 20 hygienists, is not going to be a huge generator of traffic. It takes a while to do a good job cleaning somebody's teeth.
Right.
Likewisely filling. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a McDonald's drive-thru. Okay? So, yeah.
So, there is a design review by Mass DOT for roadway renovations from town hall to the malls. The latest iteration of the design is a three-lane model with a center-turning lane.
That's the current improvement?
That's the current improvement. There is, they are not even at the 25% design stage. There is no engineering. They have no idea of what takings, if any, will be required. They have not yet decided whether they're going to go with sidewalks and bike lanes on both sides or only one side. So if you have any capacity to put your building more than 50 feet back, it would probably be to your advantage to do it. I can also send you a link to whatever is known about the, the design work. It's been going on for over a year and just isn't happening fast.
Is there particular contact with the district that would know more about that?
Actually, mostly being done out of Boston at this point. With outside consultants. So there's probably, the webpage that has been set up for it will probably give you as much information as, as there is.
You're going to go with just one curb cut on that property?
That's what we plan. Yes.
There's two now, isn't it?
I think there is actually, yeah.
We would like to have you just give some thought to how you're going to interact with other curb cuts out there. I don't know if you can line, align with the entrance to the, we used to call it the Registry Plaza, but the Registry has been gone for years. But the shopping plaza across the street that has Sears and some others. I'm not sure exactly how it lines up.
Yeah. I think it's pretty far.
No.
That's down the road a little bit.
And then we have the new one that went in.
Yeah, it's a little further up the road.
A little further up. Okay.
Okay. So pretty much site plan approval, historic commission, the engineering review, curb cut from the state. Ben Barosa?
Okay.
We appreciate your, your time and your, your talk.
With sewer and water for sewer, they'll, they'll charge you an impact fee tying to the sewer.
Okay.
So you'll wear that.
You would prefer one curb cut, I would say.
Jim?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Most likely the state would do.
Yeah.
I don't need it.
Okay. We don't.
John's got one?
John's got one, but we don't.
When we get the application, you'll give us another plan and let's go on to...
Yeah, it'll be a little more detailed.
Yeah. The plumbing is going to be critical, so check with the plumbing inspector.
Thank you.
Donald? Uh-oh. Holy moly.
Holy moly. I have one of these plans out on the table. Will you give a look at it?
What have you got first?
It's, I'll do a little quick presentation for you first. It's, we were informing, informing the board early on regarding an Amherst hotel.
Oh, yes.
409 Amherst Road. And this is a rendering, just to be able to talk about what's going on here. But we're proposing a 92-unit hotel, three-story, four-floor building. And this is the town line right here. This heavy dark line. So we are obviously applying for a project in Amherst. The driveway will be in Amherst. The utilities will be coming from Amherst. The only thing that's in the town of Hadley will be the parking lot and obviously the drainage and lighting associated with that. So we're here showing you the entire project. If I could, I'd like to put a hand over here and say, remember, this is the area that you're looking at. So we have a full set of plans, drainage calculations associated with it, seven different plans that show different, all the utilities coming in, what's up. The plans, again, cover the entire site. We didn't separate them as a separate thing, but it has to be built as a tire project. The drainage calculations, again, look at the entire site, not just Hadley or Amherst.
Where, where's the drain? The drainage is underground?
We have, it's under, it's a, the site is poor soils, high groundwater, so we have a very shallow underground storage and extremely large portion of the parking lot is a really shallow detention, underground detention system. And we have two outlets. One outlet is up here. We outlet a level spreader. We have another outlet down here, a level spreader that's connected to Towne Van Der St. And there's an existing drain pipe that goes through here and some of the water will be drained there. Again, we obviously treat it for water quality and also drainage due to the poor soils. Recharge is minimal, but we are...
Does that water go with the front?
I don't know where it goes from here. I know there's a, there's a cross cover here. Again, we've sort of concentrated on matching the pre-impulse to each one of these three locations. We have, you know, three control points that we looked at to make sure that we're matching that pre-impulse flows in those three different locations.
So the water, boy, that likely goes across the street behind stop and shop and makes the swamp bigger.
I think that's probably where it goes.
That's a lot of blacktop.
This, there's actually very little water going to this location. Almost, that's probably much of the break-off here. The rest of this water comes back here, is collected in the middle and discharged this way. Most of the roof, most of the parking lot here all goes into this. This is all, this is all wetland here.
Water?
Well, yes, in a way, but on the other hand, same amount of water is following the site today as is tomorrow. It's extremely high groundwater, poor soils here, so it has a high rate of runoff.
So you're going to go to conservation commission for this?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
But does it run off faster off blacktop than open?
It does, and that's why we spend the big megabucks putting the thing underneath the ground to slow it down so it doesn't go off any faster.
Is that true, the one parking on that thing?
Does it?
No.
On the site, is it open?
No, it's not.
It's in Amherst.
Yes, in Amherst. Amherst is controlling the...
Amherst is controlling that.
And actually, they like less parking if at all possible, so I think we have 178 parking spaces.
Well, certainly, there's going to be a real congestion with parking. And when you say the parking lot's going to be in Hadley, I want to emphasize, I want it to look like a park, not just a sea of blacktop as we see now. So there's going to have to be more landscaping, more trees, more dividers. Make it look like a park as opposed to a sea of asphalt.
Just one of the things about this is, it could be actually a nice place. It will be gated, almost a gated community with broad, aren't fans of people come in other than the tenants.
Where's the Sunoco station here?
Right up there.
That's it. Okay.
So if you put a hedge line in there, you wouldn't even see none of that from Route 9, would you?
You, there would be not very much view from Route 9. We do have a rendering showing what it looks like looking down the driveway, which is included in the package.
Where's the sign?
The sign is sitting right here.
In Amherst?
Pardon?
In Amherst.
In Amherst, yes. Correct. Again, the only thing that will be, it's obviously the only, is obviously the parking lot, the drainage and the lighting.
Okay.
Is that part of the structure or portico or something?
This here?
Yeah.
No, actually, this is the front door and we had handicap parking here and so people walking through here, we just made that as a pavers. So it's sort of the walkway coming in, so there is no, there's a little hanging ant awning over the front of the building, but this is just the pavers and then for the handicap parking and main walkway.
Too early to give out where the, where the chain is or you can't give that out yet?
It's not, it's a luxury apartments. It's not a hotel.
Oh, it's apartment, it's not a hotel? Oh, okay. Like you said 94, I thought you said 96-room hotel.
92 units.
92 units.
One, two, and three and four-bedroom units.
Oh, okay.
40B housing, as it's going, no?
It's, it's not 40B. I think they're going to have some of the one-bedrooms we're going into, but most of it's not.
Is that going to be all open from friendly's? That they can see that or not?
Through here?
No. Friendly's is down further, ain't it?
Correct.
I mean, this is, this is wooded now. It will stay wooded. Again, this is green leaves and that dark green area is already wooded. And again, we're proposing plantings all along here to screen it.
Where's Friendly Ice Cream?
Further up. Top of the, top of the picture.
Top building mark.
That one here?
Yeah.
There's a little, the big tables.
Is that, is that going to be in view of, of their, their building?
They will be able to see here, but we have a little, a little tree planted there.
Building's going to be five, four, four-story? All right.
There is a rendering in there to, to show you.
So what's your schedule for the Amherst?
Looking at you guys. So we have, obviously, we have Amherst to go through with both as EBA planning board and CONCOM as well as Hadley.
So the journey begins, then?
The journey, you're number one on the list.
How much Hadley gets for tax on a parking lot? Nothing, not a whole lot.
More than we're getting on the lawn that's there.
Wow.
It is not just a, it is a landlocked piece of property. There is no frontage on this area that I think it's...
Is, uh... June 20th, or do you want to be a little bit later than that? Would you be ready?
The client always would like to have it tomorrow.
I understand that, but is it, will it be ready to do the review for the 20th?
The plans are totally done. We're completely...
I understand the plans. I'm talking about the engineering review.
Oh, the engineering review.
Yes, sir.
This is May 1st, so...
Yes, May 2nd.
May 2nd.
That gives you like six weeks to make 20.
I think that should be plenty. Again, it's a big of size business, not that complicated from an engineering review perspective.
You've heard that before.
I say that, yeah. Of course, I said that.
Okay. You got an application?
I do. An application? You got two copies of the application or?
One copy, sorry.
Who's going to do his peer review?
You haven't figured it out yet?
He knows the other players.
He knows the other players?
Yeah.
I don't know if you need a sort of authorization, but you don't. And we have two sets of range calculations. You want one now, you want to keep up the records, or you want us just to give it to the peer review?
Uh, one for us and one for the peer review. Okay.
So we'll give you one to keep on, is it?
Yep. That'd be fine.
So this is site plan approval and erosion 7...
Or driveway access. So you need three of them.
It's access over something.
Right. Other than frontage, okay. Schedule date of publication will be 6/27.
When is that due?
6/20. Everybody here for the 6/20? How big of a parking area is that roughly marked?
The developed area...
Is ballpark, I mean, 40,000, 80,000, 16,000?
We're 26% open space, so 40,000 square feet, I don't know, say.
Okay.
Maybe more so than that.
Plus and minus?
Yeah, probably more plus than minus. 408 Northampton Road.
Is that Northampton Road? Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's a road to Northampton.
On Russell Street. Okay.
Off Russell Street. This doesn't have any frontage.
Yeah.
Great. And I was only halfway through. I am also submitting a second project.
Two sets of labels. Okay, good. Great.
Yep. And this is for Hadley Village. They're proposing to add a new building in the front, southwest corner. Which one is this now? Hadley.
Hadley Village.
The Village Bar and House.
Oh, Hadley Village. All right. Oh, okay. Oh, all right. All right.
I don't have a, a mounting for you, but I can show you the bigger league. Tanger building and Hadley Village Farm in front of the site. This is Route 9.
Great.
And this is where the old buildings were. Those have been torn down at this point in time.
Yes, okay. You ready to go to Relling Barn?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is the hotel.
Okay.
And we're proposing to install, and this is Route 9.
Okay.
And pull from the building of this location. And in the process of doing that, we're removing pavement and so at the end of the day, the amount of impervious area remains exactly the same, well, slightly less than what was existing. We're requesting that we don't have to do detailed drainage analysis because the site is balanced today and we're slightly decreasing the amount of impervious area.
Do you have enough parking support on this?
Pardon?
Do you have enough parking support on the building out there?
Enough parking? Oh, absolutely. We go through detailed parking analysis on that project.
You knew that question.
So I think it's, you know, we have the, the site area associated with it, obviously needs to be reviewed. This is quantified. This is justifying the parking. This justifies the amount of impervious existing and proposed to quantify that the drainage is no change. Again, obviously would be need to review construction details. And then this is a rendering of the proposed building.
Manny's? Really? Manny's is...
Yeah. Your first time has been out, so.
Okay. That's fine. All right.
So again, we need to go to conservation commission as well. The entire site is within 100-year footprint, so we have to comply with proper storage. We are going to do some grading around the front near the Route 9 side to make sure...
How big is the building?
Changed several times over the last couple days. Chilled upon. It's 100 by 70, so 70...
100 by 7, 7,000 square feet?
7,000 square feet.
Okay.
You should know all that. I shouldn't know these things. I've got too many questions.
You're going to have one engineer beat her beachwood fast with a punch to the other one?
And here is the application.
What is that for the 20th, huh? Sure. Okay. What is this called? I just want to see the application to put the right title on. Hadley Village.
Up until now, it's called a commercial development at Hadley Village. Or you can call it whatever you want to.
Okay.
Two sets of mailing labels, certified mailing list.
Add, 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 for you and Russell.
Is no more cuts into Route 9?
You're going to use the original brand?
Yeah. Everything's staying the same. I think it's, we're just putting this where the old buildings were and modifying this end of the parking lot and doing some excavation to make sure we comply with the best for our storage. There will be a loading, not really a loading dock, but a loading area here with flush, similar to what he has now. So we'd rather pick out that there's a flush door, flush with the cloud. And hearing day, same?
Same.
Okay.
We'll make it easy on you this time.
You are so nice.
And you got a buttered label, mailing label for that one?
There are two sets of mailing labels here.
Okay.
With the full application package, so you can try to keep them in a single pile.
That's fine. Okay.
You go. Donald Frederick.
Just left.
He left.
He was still in that, in the original group.
Craig Switzer was with it, he put, he put his name down twice, okay.
He wanted to make sure he did a good job.
And then those are the dentists, they were with him.
Oh, they were there, oh, okay, all right. Mr. Isner?
Yes, sir. Now, nothing is complicated as Mr. Donovan. This is, uh, the plan I was talking to you about at the last meeting on Rocky Hill Road with wetlands, with a multitude of wetlands. Then we were talking about the, uh, required...
Upland.
Upland, so, this is an interesting situation. A firm from East Hampton named Holmberg and Howe did the original survey, I got pulled into this, and I said, look, let them finish what they did. So, I have a plan that I didn't do, but I'm bringing it before the board to get signed off. So this is the willed up property, Breckenridge Road, Rocky Hill Road, uh, these are all the houses that are on Breckenridge Road, they back up to this field, which has been farmland for as long as I can remember. And it is currently somewhat overgrown.
So Joe lives here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have two lots, one that is two point one two acres, one that's eight point six six acres, uh, as you can see, there is a ton of wetlands on here, but there are calculations on each lot that indicate how much upland is outside of the wetland and the hundred foot buffer zone. The two acre parcel has thirty-two thousand one hundred square feet of upland, and the eight acre parcel has fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty, which is more than the third of an acre that's required.
So this one could, the house could easily be put here because there's a re- reasonable amount of up, upland in one spot.
Right, and that's all, keep in mind, that's all outside of the hundred foot buffer zone, so they can build in here without dealing with the conservation.
I understand, okay.
I'm just letting everybody know.
Okay.
And then this one, there's minimal, you can put a house in here, there's not a ton of area to do it, but it certainly can be done, and you also have the area that is, uh, between the fifty and the thirty-five foot.
That actually packed, passed the perk test?
Yeah.
Well, the... Or last summer.
I don't know when it did.
Had to be.
I, I don't know when it did, but, no, not, it wouldn't have been last summer because Hadley's got a season.
So the perk test is up here?
That's, there's, there's two of them, here and here, and there was an individual who was trying to buy this, that wanted to make three lots out of it, and I told him he was out of his mind, but, so he...
June two thousand sixteen. Right during the heart of the... Perk tests were done in last summer during the heart of the, heart of the drought.
But, uh, I told you had a season, then, whatever.
It was May twentieth. It was May twentieth.
Perk test five eight by Cold Spring Environmental showing on field location, June two thousand sixteen, I'm reading it right on a plan.
I was physically there, I can tell you that that's not accurate.
Whatever, whatever.
I mean...
Wait a minute, if that's not accurate, is the rest of this plan accurate?
Yes.
Oh, only just a portion is it?
So...
Let's, let's just stay away from that.
Well, I just, I'm just collecting information.
So one, perks one, one through four were done in March of twenty fourteen, and five through eight were done in June of twenty sixteen.
Okay, so one through four are the ones down by the road. Okay. And they, they're five and six are over here, seven and eight are here, so, anyhow. That's up to them, that's up to them to deal with.
That one's right down in front of me there, somewhere.
Over here, right here.
Did we decide, I, I just wondered, did we decide the wetland had to be contiguous?
It is, this over here is.
Okay, we, we, we have to break it into two parts, because, um, as, as they say, this endorsement is not a determination as to conformance with zoning regulations. When we're looking at approval not required plan, we have very limited authority to look beyond the frontage.
That's true, I agree with you, right, we're not approving this as a building lot. We are approving this as a subdivision of land. And the building inspector...
A non-subdivision of land.
A division of land that is not a subdivision.
Right. The building inspector and possibly conservation would have to determine the other parts of this.
Correct.
Zoning enforcement officer.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so we, all we can do is just put out there as a caution that, that it'll be an issue. But as, as long as that is not illusionary frontage, like there's not a, a cliffside here or something like that.
Or, or ravine in, ravine in between, if this was a ravine, we would have the right not to approve this, or...
If you can't get there from here...
Correct, yes, exactly.
You have the right to not sign it.
There's no ditch on the side that road?
Not enough to, not, not enough to make it un, unpa- uh, un-accessible. Randy'll shift him around.
Which way we going?
Put it right here.
Go that way. That seems to be, makes sense.
One?
Everybody?
Yep, four.
There are four, okay.
You got the, a four?
No, so, everything works. I had it, there you go.
Right there. Three fifteen.
So these two are just lots by right?
Yeah, well, it's one lot, just, just a contiguous line, so, it's just to show that there's a, a point in between, like a curve or something.
This is gonna be two little lots?
No, one lot, two lots, yes, two building lots.
And all this, what's this thing, you just...
This, this, this is one building lot, and this is one building lot. This building lot is eight acres, this building lot is two acres.
This includes all this?
Yes.
Didn't they hate that before?
Oh, yeah. I think there was squash one year, um... There you go.
Thank you, that's all I have.
David Baron of Bacon Wilson is gone, not here. David Burnson. Was he with the first group?
There's only Larry Smith here.
Only Larry Smith is here. Mr. Larry, you're up.
Evening.
Evening.
Push this stuff over here. Push that over there. Here goes on. This is Jimmy Mendez's file.
Keep me busy after the meeting.
What's up, Mr. Larry? Let's see, have you got any comments back?
Not one.
Not one?
Not one.
Isn't that great?
They have, they have two, they have, they have two weeks to respond.
Yep. There's no confusion here.
Okay, so then we can go to the threat. Okay, then the only thing we need to do is we need to get an extension on the contract.
Correct. We voted that, all right, anyway.
Yes.
But you gotta get the select note.
Right, and I sent it over to David to put it on the consent agenda.
Okay, that sounds good, that'll work out great. Perfect, I like to put this pile away then. And then, let's see. Finished up compiling the definition section. The highlights in yellow are the ones that I've added since the prior version I gave you. I did send a copy to Tim today.
Can I have one more from Mike?
Sure. There you go.
Give it to Mike.
And, uh, Tim responded immediately and was quite excited about it. It's really hard to, uh, enforce a bylaw when you don't have any definitions. So I think what I'm gonna probably do is maybe start with working with Tim to kinda make sure, see if he wants to see any massaging of it.
That's fine.
And then, what's...
Makes sense.
That makes sense, yeah, get, get his input, that way at least what we're talking about, we won't, he's, he's okay with, whether or not we are a beat up and start, but at least we can look at it, and it'll only be what we have a concern with.
Yeah, okay, that's good, that shouldn't be, nobody wrong.
That's a good idea.
A little quicker then. Okay.
Now, if we put a definition section in...
Yep.
Right now, we have definitions throughout the bylaw.
Yes.
Are we gonna have to amend every one of those and take them, no?
Well, what we talked about, we meant previously, was we're gonna add the definitions to section one, so that'll allow be purpose and definitions. And then if you go to the last page, what, uh, you decided would be best, were for those things that had definitions that were particular specifically to that section, would be to leave them in that section.
Okay.
And so this was the listing of the sections, we're pretty much gonna leave them alone.
Okay.
And so these are basically the general definitions that will apply to the entire document, um, and we're gonna leave the specific definitions in the specific chapters.
Oh, I see a couple of places, like home occupations, you pulled it out of the other chapter.
I gotta say, yeah, could...
That used to be in your table, your, uh, your, uh, table of uses.
Right.
And so we pulled that out, yeah, and I did that as Anthony went along and went through. Those are the ones that I sort of, you know, pulled out and put into the general.
Now, Larry, can our zoning, we have everything, it's written in an exclusionary fashion, you know?
Yep.
Nothing is allowed to have the except listed. It's because if some...
Says under agricultural, they have llamas.
Yep.
And it's not recorded here.
Right, there, there are different ways of defining agriculture, there's agriculture...
I know, but I'm just using...
In terms of what's exempt under the state law. And then you have, I mean, what you're talking about is which are, what are commonly refer, or commonly understood as being farm animals?
Correct.
Livestock and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
And then you, you could have another category, there's talk about exotic animals, that are somewhat, a little bit different, more unique, you got the typical run of the mill cows, horses and stuff. But, uh...
Usually, the, the concern with agricultural is either it's too small, somebody's got a few chickens in the roost that are driving the neighbors nuts, or it's getting so big, it's become commercial enterprise that a trailer trucks are going in and out, so...
I mean, right now, we do not go beyond what you went up, beyond, what you talked about previously, which is basically, you know, this is what's exempt, and then that's what's exempt under agricultural. And you're right, there are towns, and I've written them, you know, I call them the chicken bylaw.
Yep.
You know, which is, you know, it, you know, limits how, if you're gonna raise chickens in your yard for your own personal consumption, and not, you know, open up a chicken, uh, farm stand, um, uh, the bylaw you can adopt that sort of regulates that as well. I don't think you have that yet, but if you wanna get to that point.
You know, we, you, you're right, you cannot write every contingency in, so...
I mean, what, what Tim response was, and I, I, I certainly hear him, is he says, you know, the biggest problem he has without having definitions is going to court.
Yep.
And he's so right, because the worst thing that you could have happen to you when you're sitting in the stand, is have the attorney for the, uh, defendant hand you the zoning bylaw and say, show me where it says that. And if it's not in there, it's not in there, um, and so you got, you gotta have it in there, and it really, uh, it, it's gonna strengthen Tim's hand terrifically.
One of the things that, and this is the one I'm looking for, because that's gonna raise a lot of discussion, under home office...
Which, which page, Jim?
Page seven.
Seven?
Yep.
You got home office, a vocation, trade, small business, craft, art, or profession which can be conducted. We're gonna have to define small business...
Yep.
And profession.
Yep.
Because profession to me is different to what it might mean to anybody else.
That's very true.
Like, I don't think profession should include engineering, doctors, or lawyers, or stuff along with professional degrees like that, because those are, the, the original intent, at least from what I can read, was for the plumber, carpenter, electrician, that wants to conduct a business out of the home that has virtually nobody coming to see him, or once in a blue moon.
Yeah, and, and, but, you see, but that's where I would consider that person to be a tradesman.
I agree.
The physician, the plumber, and the like.
I agree.
Yeah.
But the profession, what does that mean? All, all I'm saying is we need to define that.
Yeah, I agree.
And we need to agree on it so that...
Yeah.
It's clear, that's all.
No, I agree.
Okay.
There is sort of a parallelism between home business and the home office.
Yeah, and the same thing in the home business, profession needs to be defined wherever we use it.
Well, he does have a qualification outward manifestation such as traffic, so...
Yeah, but what does that mean? Three cars an hour?
Well, if the neighbors come in and complain...
Well, that's too late.
So the other part is, um, in some parts of town, it doesn't matter. We, we, and this is not a problem we're gonna solve tonight, but...
I, I'm not, I'm not looking to solve it.
But we have this agricultural residential district which covers three quarters of the town. And it probably is at a point where we may have to revisit that at some point.
Yeah, you will, and, and that's interesting, because, uh, um... From my experience, what's considered to be a home occupation in Westfield is not the same as the home occupation in Middlefield. And I've had to do bylaws for both of those, and they are totally different, because they're totally different communities, the...
And, 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 yeah, and, and like I said, I'm not, I, I agree, I'm not trying to solve it here today, I'm simply making a point that somehow we need to define profession, okay? Whatever that may be, and then, you know, we'll have to decide, duke it out amongst ourselves, that, you know, it is or isn't, and go from there. But, you know, that's, that's a definition that, a definition that needs definition.
That's for...
Okay.
Yeah, and if we don't, then when it's litigated, like you said, you're like, dead? Or is it defining?
You know, some, some places consider one doctor to be a clinic, and it's not a home occupation, others do not, and we just need to decide what we're going to do.
Some communities wanna encourage that, some communities, well, it's just courage.
Right, yeah. So, okay.
That sounds like a good plan.
I, I think this is a huge step in the right direction.
It's a huge step. It's a huge step. In whichever direction, yeah, I agree with you. It, it will do nothing but help.
Yeah, and it's gonna be, you know, and we're going to adopt this, and by no means will we be correct first time. We're gonna be amending, but at least we'll have the starting point to amend.
Yeah. That's very true. Okay, so that's good, so I will give Tim a chance to digest it, and then set up a time where we can get together and just kinda start running through it. That sounds great. And the last thing I've got is, that time of year again.
I said contract, oh, did you put it on the agenda to vote to reorganize?
Yes.
Okay.
And this would be the FY '18 PBA, I've got two here, one first. Mike? And this is, the scope is similar to the last one, except I did add master plan as part of the scope, and that would be to work with the planning board in identifying and prioritizing implementation of the plans recommendations and strategy. Because that's pretty much given us, I think, our, our work planned for the next five to ten years.
And what's the money on this?
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Same as.
Is there an increase in that right now?
That's what it was last year.
No, it was not increased.
No, it has been increased since we've done the start.
Since I've been here.
Even when Jessica was here, that's what it was, so. I would suspect that that.
You have, or I have.
You wanna make a comment on that?
It is, the longer I'm here, and as my pay goes up, the number of hours go down.
Well, that's easy, we'll tell them not to raise your pay.
Exactly. Well, that'll work.
When it comes to Hadley, reduce his pay by half.
Although, my recollection is that we have rarely been tight on this. I don't think we've used the seventy-five hundred in any given year.
No, in fact, I think since I've been here, it's, there's been money left over.
Okay.
But you could do it if you wanna break down all this stuff and define all this stuff. To spend some time on that.
This is gonna be, this is gonna take a fair amount of.
This definition's gonna take a lot. I agree.
But this is the kind of thing you end up going over line by law.
Well, you don't have to do it all in one year either.
That's very true.
You know?
That's very true.
Do a portion, and then following years, do another one.
So that's all I've got.
Okay.
For tonight.
We wanna keep you on that first meeting every month.
First meeting a month works great.
Okay. Okay.
Terrific.
Very good.
Well, keep it short.
Thank you.
Okay.
We got some public hearings for our zoning bylaws. Okay, we'll go into that.
Thanks.
Thanks, Larry. Take care.
Thank you, Larry.
See ya.
Hadley Planning Board conducting public hearing on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017, beginning at 7:15 in the Hadley Senior Center Meeting Room. Purpose of the hearing is to review the following proposed amendment to the Hadley zoning bylaw. Number one, amend Section 6.1.1 to change six months to 12 months, and Section 6.2.1.2 change two years to three years. Number two, amend Section 23.4.2 by deleting it entirely. Number three, amend Section 21 by establishing a moratorium on recreational marijuana facilities until a mass cannabis control commission establishes guidelines. This moratorium will expire on 9/1/2018, and the complete test, complete text of the amendments and zoning bylaw and zone map may be viewed in the town clerk's office during normal business hours, published twice in the Gazette, April 17 and 24. And for the record, the first one to amend Section 6.1.1 and Section, Section 6.2.1.2 are to make that section, those sections comply with the amendments to the mass zoning special permits, can rectify, miss, say this wrong, Bill, but they amended recently those exact changes to the special permits, and they recommend, and town council recommends that we amend that section to be in compliance.
Correct.
So explain that increases.
Let me get the text of the bylaws to make it a bit more clear.
So everybody can understand that?
Yep. 6.1. 6.1 is a, an enforcement section under administration, and it currently reads, I'll read the whole text to make it simple. "This bylaw shall be enforced by the zoning enforcement officer appointed by the selectmen. No building shall be built or altered, and no use of land or building shall be gunned or chained without a permit having been issued by the building inspector, and any construction, alteration, or use under a building or special permit shall conform to any subsequent amendment of the zoning bylaw unless the construction, alteration, or use is commenced within a period of six months from the date of issuance. That will now be 12 months."
So that just gives them more time?
That just gives them a longer time to get the.
Start construction.
Start construction, okay. And 6.2.1, 6.2.1 is the Board of Appeals, and 6.2.1.2 is under special permits. "To grant a special permit for uses provided by sections of this bylaw, provided the use involved will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw and shall not be substantially more detrimental to the established or future character of the neighborhood and town, subject to such appropriate conditions or safeguards as the Board of Appeals shall deem necessary. A special permit shall lapse two years to the date of granted thereof." Now, that's going to be three years. So they have a longer period of time to commence and complete their construction. So it extends the time, both of these are to the benefit of the landowner or developer, or whoever it is that's getting the special permit. Okay?
This coincides with the state law?
Correct. They amended that last year. And Section 24, 23.4.2, let me get to that one. 23.4.2 is part of adult entertainment uses, and it simply says, "A special permit hearing shall be within 21 days after acceptance by the town clerk and a decision rendered within 21 days after the close of hearing." Both of those times are virtually impossible to, this is under the adult entertainment district. We have never had an adult entertainment application, so we've never had to use this permit. But going through the zoning bylaw under the changes that were under the first one about changing six months to 12 months and two years to three years, I found this section, and "A special permit shall be held within 21 days after acceptance by the town clerk." That is physically impossible to meet, because of the planning board only meets the first and third Tuesday, and somebody was to apply to the town clerk at the wrong time. We would only have 14 days to notify a butters and post it in newspaper, and under the special permit bylaw by the state, you can't do that. It's not enough time to notify, because we need to be held 14 days before the public hearing day. So we would not meet those timeframes, and to require a decision rendered within 21 days after the close of the hearing and type puts Bill at a huge disadvantage to get it put together, applied, and everything sent out in that timeframe. Sometime it takes them longer. So we're just gonna strike that entire paragraph, because all of that is addressed in other sections of the special permits.
So this is gonna be just all blocked out?
Correct. 23.4.2 will simply be deleted in its entirety. And of course, section, to amend Section 21 by creating a moratorium on establishment of recreation, I mean, they think there's enough in the newspaper about that for everybody to understand what's going on. We're waiting for the state to come up with guidelines on how do you establish a recreational marijuana facility? Because they're debating that themselves.
So that's the reason the one that we approved is on hold?
No. The one we approved is medical marijuana, and they can go full speed ahead with that. Because that lawsuit was declared null and void at our last meeting or the meeting before.
Well, the case has been dismissed.
Right.
Well, that's because of.
Yeah, whatever.
This parking here.
Yeah, yeah. But that case has been dismissed, they can go full speed ahead with the medical marijuana. Whether or not they're waiting for something on the recreation is anybody's guess. But as far as the medical marijuana, they could start construction, depending where they are with the state, obviously.
Jim, a question, increasing like in the ZBA from, from two years to three years to commence construction. Former Governor Deval Patrick made an, an extension to, remember when the recession came, they wanted to give people more time, hoping that business would turn around so they could construct. Is that null and void? Was that an executive order, Bill, do you know?
No, it was, it was statutory, but it was not, not specifically an amendment of the zoning bylaw. So it was another, another statute that affected the zoning bylaw, but it, I don't recall, I think it has lapsed by now, but I.
Probably has, because this would be.
Probably should've asked Larry.
That's right.
Yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't make any difference.
Does this all just take a formal vote?
Yes. We need to, we need to, either, we can take one vote on all three of the items, all three of the articles. I'll recommend, entertain a motion.
And you're gonna have four votes, huh?
You need to have majority in favor.
I'm sorry?
Majority. So of the five, we'll see, if three of us vote in favor, that's a positive or negative recommendation, depending what happens.
So I will make a motion to recommend approval to town meeting.
Of all three.
Of all three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, four, zero, one absent. Okay? Other general information, we have a letter from the American Legion inviting all, any and all town boards to the annual Memorial Day Parade on Sunday, May 28th, at 2:00 p.m. at the American Legion. Formation time begins at 1:15, the parade normally starts at about 2 o'clock. And after the parade, all participants and spectators are invited back to the Legion for refreshments. Check out the West Street Common for additional activities. Sincerely, John Karrish, Chairman of the Memorial Day Committee. So if you're interested, you can march, you can bring, there's a form if you wanna bring any kind of a float, an antique vehicle, a truck, a club, whatever it might be, if you wanna march en masse, and so we are invited. And if we decide, we can either march as a group or with the rest of the town groups. We also need some more stamps. Entertain a motion to pay, to request $196 to pay for stamps.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we have, oh, do we have any minutes?
We don't.
Okay.
We have reorganize.
Move that Jim Maximus to be chairman, build a wire clerk.
Second.
Motion second?
So let's go, let's just go down the whole list.
Oh, yes, that's what, get them all down.
Chair.
I'm chair, Bill's clerk, John is appointed to the alternate to the Pioneer Valley.
No, that's the select board approach.
Oh, it's the select board?
Yeah.
We appoint you?
Yes.
Okay, we appoint Bill to PBPC.
CPA.
No, PBPC.
CPA, Zagradnik, you're a CPA?
Yes.
What else is there? You underneath, beside the alternate, John? For the planning board?
No.
Mike is on other committees, but that's by the selectman, right? Or is he still on them? But he was off of that.
No, he was consul of government, so.
But that's, he's got out of that.
Yeah.
Okay, but what we, what we can do is.
Recommend.
Recommend as PVC.
Alternate, John.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
We have that motion. And second, correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, four, zero, one absent. Town meeting, Thursday night, 7 o'clock, Cafeteria, Hopkins, everybody's invited. I have nothing else.
I have nothing else.
I have a question. It come up last night at our meeting on the fire substation. We're hiring engineers, and they're working for the town. Do we need to hire another engineer for peer review if the engineers are working for the town?
What is the engineer doing?
You know, drainage, or whatever it takes to that.
Well, you're.
They're working for the town entity, it's not like a private deal. And what the, what the architect said, you know, normally towns don't send peer review for people working, building for the town.
We're kind of exempt from site plan approval, right?
Pretty, pretty much, it's just, we have some, was that municipal overlay, so.
That's not a municipal overlay that district, but, that's only at the dump area.
Look what the site plan approval says.
Okay.
Well, if they don't have to spend any money to do that, that.
And I just wanna make sure that we.
They should know that up front here. Berkshire Design.
Yeah, well, it says, yeah, construction of municipal structure does fall under site plan approval, so yes, we would do site plan approval for it. But with insight plan approval, we have authority to waive anything.
Who's the, who's the engineer?
Who Berkshire Design? Are they on here for peer review?
It's okay to waive it, as long as there is no objection. The reason for the site plan review came about as a result of people saying, yes, it's your engineer, he's gonna favor the drainage in your direction, and it's gonna spill all the water on me. So it became a kind of a controversial item, it's gonna cause more water, no, it isn't. So the peer review engineer came in in order to be.
The whole thing is now with the MS4, it's strictly prohibited for dispensing water on someone else's property.
Up to a point.
What do you mean, up to a point?
In other words, if the water flows in that direction now, as Mark was just indicating to us,
Existing, that's not what they said to us, everything is gonna be contained and come into that property.
Where does it go after that?
Where's the water gonna?
Oh, underneath storage.
So the water's gonna, I'm just asking, I'm not trying to be.
It's gonna be dispensed, there's, they did the bournes there, there was like 17 feet of sand in there. They figured a long time ago that was all filled in. Then they hit the bedrock down below.
Oh.
They did those bournes there, that, you know, for the building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the drainage.
Yeah. Well, it makes sense, because of that ledge behind us, often, I've often wondered why there was such a ledge where the, where the North Hadley Hall, then it drops off so much. So that must've been, okay, the block was filled in once upon a time.
Right, long time ago. Before that time.
Well, so I guess, yeah, I'd just back up what, what Joe said, that we don't, we're not equipped to decide whether a four-inch pipe or a six-inch pipe is the better choice. So that's why we went to the peer review engineers.
I can see that on a private developer, but this is the town. The town's actually hiring, paying the engineer, and they're working for the town. The town's actually hiring, paying the engineer, and they're working for the town. And it's just like the peer review is working for the town.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
You're concerned about the cost?
Right.
What's the cost?
Whatever it is, I mean, there's, there's so many.
Let's say it's $500 for a, how many million dollars is it gonna cost?
Okay. No, we don't have, let's not go down hypotheticals. Mark Darnold, Berkshire Design is working on it. Berkshire Design has done peer reviews for others. They should be able to tell us in a heartbeat what a peer review costs. They've, they've done peer reviews, and they have been asked to get peer reviews. So they'll, they'll know exactly what we're talking about, so.
Well, I would formally ask to, to waive that on behalf of the committee.
Okay, it's not on the agenda for action?
Well, then put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Put it on the agenda for next time, but meanwhile, can you talk to Mark Darnold?
Just, just find out what a peer review would cost, just for the drainage aspect, not for the rest of the process. Because I would only be interested in what is, what about review of the drainage, because if somebody, and a butter comes in at the hearing and say, "Well, I disagree with the drainage." We have no recourse than Mark's word against that person's word.
So we would have to go to, of course, another engineer?
For the drainage, because then, if another company has reviewed the drainage, forget the rest of the stuff, we could, we're okay with that. But if the drain had been reviewed by a licensed engineer, another licensed engineer that we have on our list has approved it, then somebody comes in and says, "Well, I disagree." Well, then you get a licensed engineer to disagree with these two gentlemen, or these two groups. And we've had that happen before, and a third person agreed with them. They would not disagree with them, their calculations and assumptions are good, and becomes a dead issue, nobody really disputes the drainage. The rest of the stuff, you know, a review of the drainage for that price, for that site, I have no idea, but at least ask Mark what it costs.
My question is, have you ever required anyone doing whatever municipal building, did you ever require him to do peer review?
The Turka Park, we asked them to do drainage calculating.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of a municipal building that has been built.
It's not a building.
A municipal, I mean, I'm trying to think of a municipal building being built where we required a review.
So the.
The last one was the elementary school and.
Public safety.
Public safety, twenty years ago.
Did we have a reviewing engineer review the drainage?
I do not recall.
I do not recall.
I was on the committee, I'm trying to think. I don't recall that. We had, remember the public hearing?
Yeah, the public hearing is not, it's just.
I don't honestly remember if we had the reviewing design reviewed. Because Tessier was the architect, they had a consultant do the drainage.
Why don't I just ask him what it's gonna be?
Yeah, ask him what it costs, ask him what it costs, yeah.
He can call and find that out.
Yeah, yeah, he could give a pretty good idea. I don't, I don't remember on the school, I mean, that was 24 years ago. Holy, 23 years ago.
Holy smokes. Well, they just paid this 20-year mortgage on it.
I know, that's what I'm saying, it was 23 years ago that we, we had for the building plans that we were going through that.
Yeah, those both projects went on at the same time.
Holy smokes.
Right.
Okay. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor of adjournment? Aye. Meeting is history.